It's all in your hands. Well, I remember Jerry Roberts used to like sit here and go like this. When people would be talking during games when they were basketball, during times when there were basketball games. All right, call the Weathersfield Planning and Zoning Commission meeting January fourth, twenty twenty-three to order. Ryan, could you take the attendance, please?
Absolutely. Chair Roberts.
Here.
I am here. Mr. Hammer.
Nope.
Commissioner Hughes, Commissioner Oikle, Mr. Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Homicki.
Here.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yeah.
Commissioner Viera, Drake, Liam Burney.
Here.
Thompson.
Okay, five regular members and one alternate, seat the alternate. We have two public hearings tonight. The way it's gonna work is that we'll take them in order. First thing that happens is the applicant comes up, gives us the name and address for the record, tells us what they wanna do. May have some conversation back and forth with the commission. Once we're done with that, we'll open it up to members of the public, if any, who wanna comment on the application. Following that, we'll have the applicant come back. There may be some additional questions or discussion with the commission. If after that, we think we have enough information to make the decision, we'll close the public hearing and go into deliberations. If for some reason, you know, there's additional information we're looking for or questions that haven't been answered, we may continue the hearing. But you'll know what's happening as it's happening. So the first item, three point one, public hearing, twenty-one, twenty-eight, twenty-two Z. Shoprite Hardware seeking a modification to special permit sixteen fifty-nine oh, sixteen fifty-nine oh nine Z. In accordance with section five-three A-ten of the Weathersfield zoning regulations for outdoor merchandise sales at five seventy-four Silvestine Highway. So if you wanna come up to the microphone and introduce yourself and tell us what it is that you're looking for.
Talking to this? Oh, yeah. Okay, so my name's Joe. I'm from Shoprite Hardware. And what I was looking for was, I had a permit for many years to put stuff out front. But it was only for a certain amount of stuff. So I'm here tonight to ask if I can put more stuff out and just keep it very neat and orderly and respectable. So it's not necessarily sales. I'm not gonna be doing sales outside, 'cause that's what it sounded like. It's just merchandise that's outside for display, I guess. You know, sales take place inside.
Right. Yeah, I think that was.
So it's not like a flea market outside, kinda thing?
Right, yeah. It's just putting things outside and the original approval said no more than three different types of products.
Yep.
Shall be placed on display at any one time. And I guess the question I would have is, you know, rather than saying, "I wanna have thirteen different items," is there some kind of seasonality or?
Well, physical limits. I mean, what's more important or most important, I would think, I mean, whatever you guys say, let me know. But I think what's most important is that it looks neat, it's nice, it's respectable. Nobody, I'm not doing anything that will endanger anybody. And keep it neat and looking nice. We want it to look nice in our town. And, I mean, it's usually, it's usually just seasonal stuff. So in the summer or springtimes, you know, we'll have different types of dirts out there, probably some wheelbarrows, maybe even some of those colorful chairs that I'm sure everyone's seen. And we put them outside. In the winter, not much at all. Like now, there's not, maybe we just have some garbage cans out against the building. But more or less, I guess, there is no way on earth I'm gonna put more than what I've had in the past out there. So it's not like I'm asking for, to do something over and above. I'm just asking to kinda keep it the way everyone's seen it for the last probably year and be respectable with it and safe and orderly and nice and clean. Why I think I'm here tonight is because, you know, there wasn't a problem with what I've done. Just I was moving some wood and I put it stupidly close to the road just because it was dark and it was probably four in the morning when I was doing it. We had gotten our true value truck, delivery truck. And I had stuff all around and I moved a pallet of wood kinda close to my apron. And that, you know, I left it there for maybe until only about eight o'clock or eight-thirty in the morning. I forgot, just didn't think about it. It was dark and I didn't see it. And then somebody in front of the town saw it and they looked up my stuff and said, "Hey, what's this guy doing?" And, you know, alerted me to it. And so I'm here just to update what my file says, I guess. But that was definitely an error, what I did, and, you know, I won't let that happen ever again.
Okay. No, I don't know. I guess, I guess I understand what it is that, you know, what you're saying. Does anybody else say, Tony?
Is that the only violation?
Could you talk in your mic?
The only problem, the only problem you've had so far?
So, yes, definitely so, but I don't even know that.
Denise, I don't know if there's been any other complaints.
I don't know that you, that it's called a violation. I mean, maybe that's what a violation is, but, I mean, I just kinda got yelled at for doing it and.
So it's an observation?
Observation, probably, 'cause a violation, I'm thinking fines and stuff like that. I didn't, I didn't get in that much trouble, so.
My only issue is visibility. You don't.
Yeah.
You go out of your way to keep things low-profile on the sidewalk or?
We'll certainly do that. We'll certainly, I will certainly do that and I'm always aware to that. And, but, you know, what I'm asking for today is to keep stuff out there neat and orderly. And that could be something that's said in there and that's very, that's the most important thing. I don't, you don't wanna put things out there that are gonna obstruct visions or anything. I wouldn't, no. That's never happened and that can't happen.
I like where I think you were heading with it, where, as opposed to saying like how many types of products, you can say, "Where are you allowed to store it?" And then you store it at your discretion, no matter what it is. And maybe we can define stuff that are allowed to be close to the snow shelf where people might be looking one way or another on the Silvestine in order to get out into traffic. So I don't know if we are able to do that or if it just works with staff and kinda defines that, but.
Yeah.
That makes more sense to me.
Yeah. Peter had his hand up and then Tom.
Yeah, so Joe, if I understand correctly, you basically wanna keep doing what you're doing.
Yeah.
Is it gonna expire? I'm not sure.
I, no, the reason, yep, the reason why I'm here today, I think, like I said, I think I did something wrong a few weeks ago. I put something where I shouldn't have, in the art of just juggling things around while I was, you know. And, and that alerted somebody that they actually went into my file and said, "Wait, why is this guy doing this to begin with?" And he looked in my file and says, "Hey, he's only supposed to put three things out and there's like thirty things out." So he came in and started listing like all the things, you know, right as I, it's not, you know, it's not three things, so. And he went back and, and I, and speaking with Denise, you know, I'm happy to be here because I want it to be something that I don't have to worry that I'm doing something wrong, so.
Okay, so it probably was a zoning officer, I would imagine. And the question is, what's appropriately placed or not is kind of up to his discretion, right?
Yep.
So maybe what we have to do is, along with the numbers of things, it sounds like he wants more than three, also define maybe a little better where he can put stuff, right? So people don't call him out on it if he, if he happens to put it, you know, a place where someone thinks it's out of place.
Yeah, so if I can interrupt one second, it sounds like the, it sounds like I was told that maybe I shouldn't focus on the numbers of things, 'cause that's where it gets messed up on. So, but what I hear you saying and a couple of other people on the board were saying, you know, it's about where. So I don't, you know, I'm all up to, to that. Let's keep it at, you know, I'll keep things have to be close to the building. So that's, you know, keeps it out of harm's way there. And I have like a little jetty that I kinda put some wheelbarrows up. If you think that, how would we spell that out, then I won't do that, you know? Then I'll just keep things against it. And the last third thing that I do, which is just tremendous to sales, but, you know, I won't do it if it, you know, and that is when I put those beautiful colorful chairs out toward the street, I don't go further than the walkway. So I go up to the walkway with the chairs, so there's still plenty they could see and stuff like that. It's not by the snow shelf, it's behind the walkway. But if you even figure, ah, maybe we won't do that, I can even live with that. I just wanna be able to, I mean, put stuff out and put it, I'll put it around the building.
So if I could just sum this.
Yeah, go ahead.
I wanna try to understand you. What, what you're suggesting is rather than enumerate this like three or four or five or six.
Yep.
What you'd like us to consider is allowing you to put out at your discretion whatever you need to put out for the season.
Yep.
But close to the building.
Yeah. If, if, if that's the simplest way we could put it, I think that'd be fine.
All right.
The only thing I would lose out on if I pick that, where it might be a little bit, maybe if you guys wanna think about it, is I kinda like to, so if you're looking at the building, I keep things against the building. I kinda like having, since I can't have a sign or anything up there, I'd like having like either a couple colored chairs or a couple wheelbarrows just kinda from my building toward the, you know, so vertical rather than horizontal.
This is against a telephone pole, you're right?
Yeah, yeah. You see where those wheelbarrows are?
Yeah.
And they do, you know, I would like to be able to at least keep that. And if, if not, though, it's okay.
Okay.
All right. Tom?
Excuse me? I could do, follow the line of thought that our chairperson and the outer head support. And looking at what the standard of the earlier permit was, you know, the use of the word "types" seems to be something that, that is quite ill-defined.
The, I'm sorry, the word what?
The use of the term "types" seems to be
Yeah.
a, a term that's rather, rather ill-defined.
Yes.
Like precision and therefore is kind of inherently challengeable. And I think it probably allows too much discretion on part of any critics of your establishment as well as provides, I think, in a sense, more than what you're really asking for. To me, it would seem kind of irrelevant to use the, the term "types" of, of items. I'm, I'm a customer, you know, occasionally of, of your establishment. And my, my, my main concern would be the access into the store and particularly when the parking area is that's right in front of your store and there's only a very brief amount of territory that's available for parking in the front of your store. And I've been there where you had, you know, basically items that are really close to where vehicles are parking. And my concern is, is probably more to do with, with safety and the aspect of, of people when things begin to get crowded. And I've noticed that things get, tend to get crowded in front of your store usually from about three, three P M. on, on weekdays till your quitting time. So that seems to be where you're, you know, you have most activity in terms of people coming in and out. And I think there's, there's some issue of, of safety with regards to where you've got things placed and the, the, the percentage of space that you're using to, you know, to display the items that you're, you're offering for sale to the public. So taking kind of all that into account, it seems to me like, you know, a more appropriate standard to allow you to do what you want to is to basically eliminate the, the term "items" and go to a more objective standard of, you know,
Safety.
have a, have a measure of the amount of available square footage for the display and then put a cap on the amount of square feet that you can utilize to display items. For example, if you have a thousand square feet in front of the store to use for display, perhaps cap the amount that you can use for display at, say, five hundred square feet. Some, some standard like that that can be mutually agreeable to, to everybody.
That could be.
That would seem to be a more objective kind of standard with also restrictions or, 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 not restrictions, but standards relating to accessibility and freedom from, you know, tripping hazards or other safety issues that could be brought into play with regards to where you place things and the, and the kinds of items that you've got out.
I'm, I'm willing to do whatever, whatever it is that you guys feel most comfortable with, but.
What would be the, what is the amount of, of square footage in the area that you're using?
So, yep, you mean like linear foot of the building or square footage of the?
Square foot.
Square foot of the parking lot?
Square, not square footage of the parking lot, but say square footage of the area between the building and the parking area.
There isn't any.
There isn't much.
Whoa, so wait a second.
There's only a few feet. There's basically the walkway.
It's basically right there, see?
Yeah.
So you're.
So it's basically, you know, probably an area about three feet by forty feet or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, whole front.
Right. So if, if, you know, multiply those measurements and you get a number and then utilize a figure of X percent of that number would be the amount
So let's just.
the amount that you could use for display purposes.
So just so I can sort of kind of try and understand that. So if that were the case, three by forty, so that's a hundred and twenty square foot, right? Let's say you said, we said, came up with fifty percent.
That was just an arbitrary figure.
I know, arbitrary, the whole thing, right? So that would be sixty square foot arbitrarily, right? Fifty percent. So sixty square foot, what would that equal in product? Like, how would you determine what, so you would, you would say it's all right to fill up sixteen square foot of space anywhere with product? In that scenario?
Only within that, that eligible.
Only within that eligible area.
Area that, that you'd be using for outside display purposes.
Yeah, in that hundred and twenty square foot, I could fill sixty square foot with stuff like, so how would a wheel, so a wheelbarrow, how many square foot would that take up, you think? That would take up three square foot? So I'd technically be able to put twenty of them out there?
Probably, you know, however many that would fit within that standard. So long as you weren't otherwise creating a, you know, a hazard situation for
Right.
people to have access.
I kinda understand, but not exactly.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman?
And I think that could be something that could be worked out with the staff. You know, jointly between you and, and, and the town staff and work out.
We could do that.
You know, precise, you know, a more precise measurement.
Would it be crazy for me to suggest maybe possibly, you know, safety is the number one goal? And I'm just, rather than to put numbers into that equation, just simply say, maybe, okay, put product out, put it out against your building and make sure it's safe, neat and orderly?
That's too vague of a standard.
Too vague?
I think you need, I think you need a more definitive.
And then, so the last thing I'll say about that is, so if I, if we said the safety is the number one goal and keep it against the building, but I do have in front of the doors what you would call a pad, like a cement pad, so like where there was an overhang, I guess, where you go into the building and come out of the building? So what if we said something like, you know, safety and everything and keep it against the building and that's okay, but can't be on that pad, therefore you'd have complete and total access all the time? No? I just.
I think that's probably, you know, a starting point for your bargaining position.
Okay.
I don't think that would be something that, where we should wind up, it'd be less than that, but.
I'm just trying to keep it simple, only thinking that I am not the one, I mean, I will enforce whatever it is, but I'm not the one a hundred percent of the time that's always doing these things. And if I keep it simple, it's always more doable and attainable than if I have a, a whole sheet on how to do it, so, you know. But I, I, that's not to say I won't, you know, I will if I had to.
Well, like I said, I, I would tend to think that some kind of, you know, objective standard could be adopted where the details could be worked out
Yep.
between yourself and town staff that, that meet, you know, those standards.
Dave?
In our package, we were given photographs. Is this a proposed layout of what you wanna do?
No, that's basically just the, at the time, at the day that the gentleman came and, and, you know.
Okay, 'cause the one thing that I noticed is, um, and I'm pretty sure that, is you've blocked the ADA sign, which is a state.
What's that, the, the handicap sign?
Products in the path from any parking place and to the door, the path, path of the ADA. I'm just saying that in the future,
Yep.
that shouldn't be happening, 'cause
Okay.
someone could write you up on it.
Yep, got it.
But I like what's going on on the other side by the propane and the trash cans and the pallet of sand or so forth.
Yep. I have, I have some dirt and stuff that is against the building going down.
Yeah, I remember that.
And, and I just keep, always keep that there and I, I don't know if, whether or not if that's what we're talking about as well. So, I mean, that's why, that's why by keeping it somewhat general, and I don't mean to say that because I have a problem with what you're saying, 'cause I don't. I'm just saying it because I know I do have those dirt piles on the side. And, I mean, do I, is that fall into the same thing or is that just storage or, you know, not sure how, what we do about that?
That, it would all be considered outdoor display area.
Yep, okay, yep. That, that's probably why it's best to not give it a definite number and, on things. I mean, even though that is one thing, you know, in a three thing scenario or three, what do we say, three kind? Three type, right? It's kinda like a type. Dirt is one type, right? Even though it's, you know, there's different kind of dirt.
Yeah, I don't know really what, what "type" means within the scope of
Yeah.
the current standard.
Tom, with reference to the approval of April twenty-first of two thousand and nine, it's what, thirteen years ago? We have only had one observation. There's been no complaints.
That's right.
There's been no issues, been no problems. I'm not sure why we're here. We have five bullets on that, that memo, the approval that we gave in two thousand and nine. I think what Joe is asking for is just to continue what he's doing already with a courtesy visit to us to clarify the observation. There hasn't been any other issues. All five bullets are very specific. As Commissioner Dean says, no more than three different types of products will be placed on display at one time. That's the first one. If we wanna visit anything, maybe we could say the word "six" instead of "three." But there's been no issues here. So I, I'd suggest we, you're not looking for any other change other than that. We can endorse that approval and welcome that you're here tonight. You've clarified the issue and move on to other adventures.
And I just wanna let you know that there's, you know, I take everything I do seriously and, and I understand what's safe and I will certainly, no matter what, take that, you know, not block my ADA signs, not do, you know, blocking the doors. And I'm certainly gonna, you know, going forward, just make sure that it's really comfortable and safe out there.
I'm grateful you're here, Joe. You're sort of like, one time I went in there, it's like Macy's, you referred me over to Gimbel's to get to another competing product anyway on it. If you weren't here, we'd have to go to Katz over in Glassonberry or Home Depot, so I, I suggest we move on.
I'm not saying this to, 'cause I'm begging you guys or whatever, but I love this town. I love being here. I love doing what I do. You know, that's what I do, so it's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I, I get, I hear where you're coming from. I, I mean, I appreciate what everybody's saying. I think, you know, if, if we just kinda go, "Thank you, have a nice day," we're just inviting the same problem because we're the Planning and Zoning Commission, we're not the zoning enforcement people. So, you know, if a zoning enforcement officer counts four kinds of sand, you know,
You're right.
you'll be dealing with that. So, I mean, I didn't wanna monopolize the conversation out of the gate, but I mean, my, my initial thought was basically to get rid of number one, limiting the number of different types of products, just so that we're not counting, you know, our, our folding Adirondack chairs, the same thing as hard plastic Adirondack chairs. You know, how many different kinds of sand are there so that we're not wasting time with that? And, you know, just basically sticking with number two, where the products don't extend beyond the car stops. And I think that the products are not in required parking spaces. Otherwise, you know, you're the one who has to bring it out in the morning and take it in at night. You know, you, you're not gonna bring in two hundred thousand pounds of stuff every day just, just to do that. And, you know, if we keep, if we keep access safe, if we keep parking safe and, you know, the parking spots that are required and are, you know, at a premium are all available for customers, you know, I don't, I don't really see the need, particularly after, you know, twelve-plus years of, you know, honoring the intent of putting things outside, you know, to, to stick to three. I mean, that, that was kinda where I was going was, you know, more geographic and, you know, I, I understand Tom's point about not basically covering every square inch, but,
Yeah.
you know, having to have a surveyor come out there to figure out, you know, "Well, if I push the grills a little closer together, it'll only be forty-two percent of the area on the left-hand side of the building." Instead of fifty, it, it's just too much work.
Well, in that, again, to, to my benefit, I mean, my, in two thousand and nine, I was only here for a year and a half. So I remember when I came in front of you first to ask to put stuff out, 'cause they didn't want anything out there at that time. You know, and we said three kinds, they just suggested that and I jumped at it. I was like, "Yes, I can do business." You know, I can put stuff out and make it look, 'cause we had, that building had a dumpster out front for like, I don't know, six months and it had no.
There's drips on the side.
Yeah, so, so basically, I, and, you know, I'm from New York and I worked in my dad's hardware store and we always put stuff out. So I was like, "I gotta get stuff out." If I, when I don't put stuff out, at least back in those days, people never knew I was open or there. People, nobody would come in. So I put garbage cans out and people came in, you know? It's amazing, like with the chairs and stuff, how I, when I used to put them close to the road, which I probably won't do after this anymore, you know, keep, it's amazing. It's like turning on a light switch. You put chairs out, everyone comes in for chairs. They're not out, nobody buys chairs.
Right.
It's amazing.
Yeah, it's like the guy with the snow blowers and the lawn mowers up the road.
Yeah. Yep.
I don't know. It is a public hearing. Is anybody in the public?
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm looking at these pictures and I'm okay with getting rid of the types. That doesn't make sense. That's, that's fine. The only thing that I would be concerned here is, from these pictures, it's unclear if you're encroaching on the parking area or not. It's not, it's not clear. And I could see a zoning officer going by and say, "Oh, I think he's encroaching on it."
Right.
So I think, to make it easier on you and the guys that do this, 'cause you may not be there in the morning and some guy's gonna go out there and you'll have to put it somewhere and he's just gonna put it somewhere and then cause you more trouble.
Yep.
I think what would be best is if you just draw a line. I think what would be best is if you just draw a line where stuff can go. I mean, you could probably put an outline with the town, this is where it could go, and then.
Absolutely.
Anybody can just put whatever they want within that outline. For example, it was just mentioned that you certainly don't want to put anything in front of the handicap sign. You, you wouldn't have a line there.
Right.
Because there's a handicap.
Right.
On the other sides, it's okay. So, if, if you have three feet from your, your window, and it doesn't impede on the handicap or the adjacent parking, you're okay.
Yep.
Just put it within that area, that's what I would do, just draw a line. Then that's objective, no one, no one can say, you're not doing what, what you should be doing. That's my, my suggestion.
Yep.
Is that okay with you?
That's great with me, um, so, so we could do that, why don't we, could we come up with, um, like, a certain amount of feet from the building, and I'll draw that line?
Yeah, I think you have to just check and see how long your parking is, and then you can take that.
I mean, is there a certain, um.
There's a requirement how much you need for parking, length.
Length?
Yeah, there's a, there's a parking length, so anything beyond that, you could store in there.
Right, got it. So I'll find out what that length is, and then I'll see what I have now, and that's how much I'd have, and I draw the line.
Yep, that would, that would be the most objective.
Yep.
Thing you could do, and not measuring anything, you're just within the line.
Yep.
Yeah, just looking at it, like, real quick, as a suggestion, the south face of your building, if you started there and did like a four-foot row of the chairs, or whatever else you're gonna have, as long as it's not too tall, that won't impede with the angled parking that's in the front. And then you stop right when the handicap spot starts.
Yep.
Because that's a ninety-degree parking spot, so they need to pull out, and I assume go the other way. I don't know how people park their.
Yeah, not easy.
Um, but it's there, and I don't know that the town cares all that much about the parking space at the very end, because I don't think that's a tenable spot, anyway. So maybe just hatch that whole thing.
Just put it in that spot, yeah.
As long as you keep the hatch for the handicap spots.
Wide open, right, yep.
Can actually get in and out of their car. So I mean, that's two pretty large spaces, and then you have behind the curb for the garbage cans and the sand and stuff, so. And, I mean, you can define that pretty easily with words.
Exactly, right. And, and, and in addition to that, I'd want to leave the dirt along the side of the building where it is.
That's fine.
Yep.
I think you have plenty of space there.
Yeah. That's basically all I want. So how would you, like, how would we do that, what would we do? Like, how would you guys write that up, is it, like, what would be my requirements at this point? I, I mean, I can't, can't draw those lines and do that stuff now, I think, that's right, springtime, maybe, kind of?
Yeah, I mean, in general, you're gonna demarcate areas that you can store stuff that don't impact the operations of the parking lot.
Right.
And you can determine that just by drawing it out and saying, all right, can somebody?
So you're saying draw, do that, draw it out, and come back and re-show it?
I don't know how that.
Yeah.
I don't think you're an engineer, just go out there and take measure, just measure it.
Do you guys have, does anybody have the length that I'm supposed to have in parking, or should I find that out?
I do have that.
You do?
Yep.
So you'll just.
And I'll, I'll help you with the mapping, too.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, so once I had that, I can actually figure it out from there, I think. Good.
Just a sketch.
Yeah. I think I'm good, I could do that, thank you, thank you all. All right, thank you. That's it?
No.
No.
No, it's a public hearing, is there anybody in the public that wants to comment on this application?
Probably say, yeah, this guy's nuts.
Sure, well, come on up, give us your name and address, and then comment.
I am Kathy Clark, three thirty Main Street, and I've actually bought chairs, Joe, because the chairs were out there, that's all I have to say. I did, we needed chairs one time, and I went there to buy chairs, because I knew you had chairs, that's, that's it.
Approved.
Thought you can buy different kinds of chairs.
Yeah, I mean, I. I've bought, I've bought three different types of products, not including chairs.
Every time I go.
Um. Kind of at a loss as to what we should be doing then, since, you know, we're not in a position to draw his application for him. Do you just want to continue the hearing, do you think you'd be able to do that? Or should we just take some kind of action to conclude this, and then he can come back at some point when there is a finite plan, and we can review it and waive the application fee and that sort of thing?
Yeah, I think that that's the best way to handle it.
All right. Yeah, I mean, the, the other thing that I was thinking, just to avoid, you know, having to rush, and to avoid having, you know, somebody raise the same different types of product question, you know, for the time being, you know, we could agree to remove condition one, and throw out their products shall not be placed to extend beyond the car stop or in required parking spaces, because it shouldn't be.
Right.
And then, you know, you can take your time to figure out where else you want to put the stuff. Because frankly, I think that gets you wherever you need to be, you're not blocking access, you're not in the parking spots.
Yep.
You know, and we're not counting to three anymore.
Yep.
It becomes an internal support staff responsibility.
Right.
So is that a motion, Richard?
No, we're still in the public hearing. I, I just wanted to know whether there was.
No, that makes sense.
I think that makes sense.
Proceedurally where we're gonna go.
That satisfies all of them.
All right, so, um, want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All right. I'll second.
All right, motion by Peter, second by Tony to close the hearings, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, abstentions? Okay, uh, someone want to make a motion on the application?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve twenty-one, twenty-eight, twenty-two Z with the elimination of item one from the April twenty-first, two thousand and nine approval, and, did you say we were not changing the number two?
Just changing number two to add beyond the car stops or in required parking spaces.
So, beyond, uh, so, all right, so, I think that's on record.
Yep.
I won't repeat it.
I'll second their motion.
All right, motion by Ryan, second by Tony, any discussion?
Yeah, just one, one query to that, no, there's been, uh, a lot of discussion the last few minutes, pertaining to, uh, you know, him or someone doing some, you know, measuring and providing some kind of, uh, you know, uh, sketch or plan that would be provided and discussed and reviewed by town staff. I, I would tend to think that should be part of the, the motion as well.
Sounds good. So applicant to work with staff to demarcate.
Delineate.
Delineate the area in which outdoor products may be displayed. And if a subsequent application is filed for that, we would waive the fee.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Ryan, you accept that?
Yeah.
I accept it.
And I'll accept that as a second.
All right, thanks, Tom. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Yep, thank you.
All right, three point two, public hearing twenty-one, twenty-seven, twenty-two Z, Solly Engineering LLC, seeking a zoning text amendment to section five twelve D of the Weathersfield zoning regulations to modify the self-storage facility regulations.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, town staff, for the record, my name is Robert Pryor. I'm a licensed professional engineer and land surveyor with Solly Engineering. Here tonight, representing, um, the contract buyer for twenty-one seventy-six, twenty-one eighty, Berlin Turnpike, for a proposed amendment to your zoning regulations. What I'd like to do, if it's okay, is I'd like to talk a little bit about what we're proposing to do, and why we need this text amendment. Some of this is probably going to be a little redundant, because we, you had already heard some of this stuff at an informal, sort of pre-application, I think, a couple of months ago. But I'd like to get it on the record at this point, if that's okay with everybody. What we're, what the applicant is proposing to do is develop a climate-controlled self-storage facility on the subject site. Subject site is presently, has existing residential structure on it, but is generally undeveloped, or, you know, not fully developed as it could be. It's, it's a pretty unique site, in that the area, the frontage up on the Berlin Turnpike, or the area that fronts Berlin Turnpike is relatively narrow and width, and somewhat restrictive to development. And the developable area is really sort of down the slope and around the corner, up next to the wetland area on the site, where the site widens out. We feel that the use is, it's a good use for the site, because it allows development of a site that's, that's generally undeveloped, so it does bring some economic benefit to the town. It doesn't, um, it's not a big traffic generator, self-storage doesn't create a lot of traffic, doesn't require a lot of pavement, parking. So it's not what we would call an intensive use, that's going to generate a lot of traffic up on Berlin Turnpike, but it does allow you to get some development on this property, for a pretty good-sized building, and, uh, we feel that, again, is the site is well-suited for the use, and we think that the use is well-suited for the site. Now, under the current regulations, you have very specific requirements for self-storage in your regulations. And what the thing, the part of the regulations that sort of would not allow us to do what we're proposing to do, is this, is the aspect of making this a mixed-use facility. Based on what we talked about before, uh, you know, another, other uses that we could mix with the self-storage use aren't really appropriate based on the site itself. Site access isn't that, isn't great for, you know, an industrial or retail facility, you would need a lot more parking. So it, it wouldn't allow as full a development of the site, and I don't think it would be as benign a use for this, for this property if we went that direction. So, what we're seeking, um, and I just, I'll just mention that the site plan essentially is the same site plan that you did see the last time, we did remove the outdoor storage from the site plan. We did, we did understand that there were some concerns about the outdoor storage, so we did ultimately remove that, leave a more vegetated buffer between the paved area and the, um, the residential development to the south. The pavement that you do see at the end of the building is really what's required for us to be able to maneuver emergency vehicles in and out, fire trucks, and, and things of that nature. So it's about the minimum we can put, just because we need to get, if a fire truck comes down there, it needs to be able to turn around and maneuver and get back out. So, the, let's pull up the regulations, the actual regulation itself. So the portion of the regulations that we're seeking to amend is five point one two D of the self-storage facility regulation. And I think what I, the first thing I would say is that the part D is, is, it's all discretionary, and it's still going to be discretionary. So if we, if we, if you grant us the, the, just the change to the zoning regulations, the text, it doesn't mean that this is, becomes an as-of-right thing, you still have the discretion to not waive the mixed-use requirement if, for whatever reason, you saw fit to do so. It still allows you that discretion. What we are trying to do is, we are trying to, right now, the, the ability for you to waive those, that portion, the mixed-use component, is limited to existing buildings that are essentially adaptive reuse of existing buildings. So the first thing that we're asking is that you could, you could, you could, you would have the discretion to waive the mixed-use component for a new building, um, which is what we're trying to do. And then, as we go down the list, there's some requirements that we, that, that you require with regard to that, that has, that the development would have to meet, which we, we haven't removed any of the requirements. We've added some, actually added some additional requirements that, that, that a new building would have to, would meet. And, and those requirements are, one, it would have to have direct access from the Berlin Turnpike. So I think that was, that was something that was requested or discussed last time that we were here. B, that it, that it would be located on a site with a minimum of ten acres property, so we're not looking at small sites, these would be rather, rather large sites, um, that we preserve fifty percent of the site as undeveloped, that would stay undeveloped, so on a ten-acre site or greater, you'd be looking at at least five acres plus that would remain as undeveloped site area. And that the building would be located more than two hundred and fifty away, feet away, uh, from the right, from the right-of-way, which is from the Berlin Turnpike. So, you know, all those things, I think, are consistent with what you were trying to do with the, with the self-storage regulation, in that they do, they do, not, they still would never allow a self-storage-only building to be placed right up against the Berlin Turnpike. You would still have to have a, any site that this would apply to, um, would have to have a buffer, you know, a two hundred and fifty-foot buffer away from the Berlin Turnpike. And, um, and, and we looked at it, and we, we identified, I think, one other site that this might apply to. There may be others, but we, we're, we identified basically one site, so it's really going to apply to a limited number of sites, anyway. But it would allow us to, again, it would allow us to develop the site as we're proposing, um, and it would allow for, you know, the, you know, the economic development of a site that's, that's a, that's a challenging site. And it's, and it's set, and I, I think that, you know, you've probably seen some, some different proposals for this site that, you know, would probably generate more traffic, and, and just not be, I think is good, um, you know, for the, for the town. And I think this allows a, like I say, a rather benign use on a, on a site that's kind of sat vacant for quite a long time. And it, you know, there certainly would be an economic benefit for the town. I'm open for questions.
The other, the other site that you located is that?
We can, I think we can, I think we, I think we have an.
Behind the self, behind the other self-storage?
It's on seventy-nine Progress Drive, I believe is the address.
Well, that doesn't have direct access to the Berlin Turnpike.
It has frontage, technically, so it could have, it could obtain direct access.
Right, you couldn't get across the wetlands to get there.
Correct, so even though the site is possible, the relatively small area is actually entirely wetlands. So, potentially it's, I don't want to say impossible, but highly unlikely.
It's a permitting nightmare, is what you're saying.
Correct.
I, I hate to say, I hate to say that it only applies to this site, because there may be sites that we haven't identified, but when, when we looked at it, that's the site that we found, that.
And that's behind the self-storage, right?
I'm not a hundred, I'm not a hundred percent sure about that.
Why, why is it just Berlin Turnpike, could it be in the Silas Dean, why are they, is it just the Berlin Turnpike? So why do we, they have words that says Berlin Turnpike?
We, you know, we, we have no problem of not limiting it that way.
You're asking for a general regulation change, you can't just change Berlin Turnpike. I mean, it could be Silas Dean that would have those requirements applicable, right? That could be another site there, I, I don't know.
I, I think, I thought that, we, we may have gotten the impression last time we were here, that that's, that, that there was some, there was, the Berlin Turnpike was the main point of concern, we're not, we don't, that, that was something that we got from our discussions here, so we may have misunderstood, we could certainly.
No, you didn't misunderstand.
We can certainly dis, we can certainly not limit it to the Berlin Turnpike.
No, I, I think this is, this is fine, and if somebody wants to come in and amend it to refer to the Silas Dean, we can discuss it at that time. I mean, I, I think, you know, frankly, this was meant to allow the development of this particular parcel.
Right. It's very specific.
Yeah, fortunately, there's another one, other one.
Maybe.
Yeah, well, at least theoretically.
Yeah.
Anybody have questions?
Just to clarify one question, the, the two hundred and fifty feet from any right-of-way, do you mean the frontage? You mean from the access road?
From the, from the actual right-of-way, which means the, we, in this case, it would be the Berlin Turnpike right-of-way.
That's not all bound. That's not all boundaries and easements?
No, no, that, it would be, so it would be from the Berlin, it would be from the Berlin Turnpike essentially. Or if it was a corner, if it happened to be a corner lot, that was a local street that connected to the Berlin Turnpike, you'd also have to be 250 feet away from that street line as well.
Yeah, I mean, I had made a note to add any highway right-of-way, just so that it didn't include like, you know, somebody's electric right-of-way or something like that.
Yeah, maybe like non-access line or something.
I'm, I'm curious to see if there's any comments or explanations from town staff with regards to this proposal. I, I assume Denise, you've had a chance to review this. Do you have any comments? And I'm particularly interested or concerned if there are any potential unintended consequences that you can foresee from this besides the, other than those that have been articulated by the applicant.
Not in addition to what has been identified for the record.
See, this is a rather, you know, benign change to the regs. It's not contrary to either the spirit of the regulations or the, you know, the plan of development.
The only thing that I would make note of is the comments from CROG that they found no apparent conflict with the regional plan. However, due to the broad language used in the revision, staff would advise caution when proceeding with the petition to maintain alignment with mixed-use efforts in the region.
And how could that be achieved with respect to this application? Any language change from what's proposed or?
I mean, I think inherently with the type of application being a special permit, it would be a case-by-case basis for you to review.
So I, I'm getting the impression that you don't have severe concerns about any serious consequences contraindicating, any contraindications to our current plan of development or, or the spirit of the regulations?
Not in terms of what's being proposed.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Anyone to the left? Yeah, I think just to, to follow up on, on Tom's comment that, you know, in addition to being a special permit, I mean, we have to make the four findings here to kind of waive the requirement of mixed-use, which is, you know, the objective, the ideal and so forth. You know, but this provides us a little flexibility in situations where particularly sites that, you know, I think most of us have been here long enough to have seen some other proposals that really are unfeasible, you know, or somewhat unsafe. You know, in varying ways and that, you know, this type of use is probably more consistent with what we would want to see in that area than, you know, dense residential or something like that down in a hole off the Berlin Turnpike.
Yeah, in reviewing this, I found myself being amenable to the proposed change. But I was concerned if there's anything that I missed or didn't conceive of in, in terms of my own review of the application.
No, I know, I, yeah, I mean, it's one of those things where, you know, you look at something and it looks good and then it's like, well, what am I missing here? So that's why we have these conversations.
We're just approving these regulation changes, but there's really nothing being offered other than a concept, right? They could back, back away from this and nothing could happen there, right?
Right. Yeah, I mean, we, we revised the regulations probably 15 years ago to accommodate the possibility of certain kinds of mixed-use residential down there. And we, you know, had particular requirements for properties bisected by town lines, located on, you know, roads that start with B and things like that that, you know, you know, made, made it obvious what we were talking about and that just didn't come to pass.
Well, when do you expect to come in with the site plan?
We're, we're very far along on the site plan, so we would expect that we would be in, in the next 30 to 45 days with the site plan application.
Richard, could you tell us again why you'd want to include highway on the letter D?
Just to clarify that we're talking about the, a highway right-of-way, you know, of a, of a street rather than, you know, for example, if, you know, the property up above it has a right-of-way to access the back of the other property that's not a public right-of-way. You know, maybe that's a better word, public right-of-way.
State non-access line or something.
I don't know what that is.
That is the difference between town and state property?
I might suggest that.
I'd want to include the town.
I might suggest that instead of any, we would say the public.
Or just any public right-of-way?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. This is also a public hearing. Does anybody have anything they want to come and say? If not, is there a motion to close the hearing?
Still moved?
Second. All right, motion by Tom, second by Peter to close the hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, hearing is closed. Does someone want to make a motion on the application itself?
Make a motion to approve 21, 27, 22Z, seeking a zone text amendment in section 5, 12 dash D of the Williams Hill zoning regulations to modify self-storage facility regulations with reference to page 5 in the bold, specific items under letter D, construction of new buildings, as well as section 4, construction of new building housing, only self-storage or related uses with letters A, B, C, and D inclusive of D being located more than 250 feet from any public right-of-way.
I'll second.
All right. And the reason being that it's consistent with our plan of conservation and development? Okay. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next item. This is not a public hearing. It's a pre-application review of 133 Main Street.
I'm Michael Clark.
And I'm Kathy Clark.
We recently purchased 133 Main Street and we're seeking a change of use for a part of the property. Right now, there's, there's been an existing business in the red barn section of the property. There is a section of the residential structure that was originally created for commercial use. That was the Enchanted Heart for a number of years. And we're looking to reuse that space for mercantile use as well as create an additional space comprised of the first three rooms closest to Main Street. And we're just here looking for guidance in the application process and, you know, to kind of get in front of any potential concerns or anything that could hinder a successful application.
So the application would be for a change of use?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a little more overview, we really have no intention of changing the exterior of the property very much. It's suffered a period of neglect, so we just intend on refurbishing. You know, replacing the roof, painting, replacing any rotten wood, keeping everything the same color as it is now, no additional landscaping. So, you know, it's important to us to kind of keep things as historic as they are. So as we move forward with the project, hopefully, our, our hopes is to avoid making any unnecessary changes to the structure of the, the building.
What, what type of commercial activity do you anticipate?
So we've put some feelers out. We're also business owners in town. We know a lot of people in the, the community that have kind of shared ideas with us. We've had, you know, different things such as one bookstore that's interested in one of the spaces. Today I met with a couple that has like a vintage homeware business. We've had a couple that does like cake mixes and granola and things like that.
You have a children, someone who's interested in opening a children's clothing boutique is coming to look at the spaces.
Right, so kind of like low-impact retail kind of stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no cooking, no, no brew pub. We, no, we just would like to see some more small business retail down that end of the street. Seems like it's in accordance with the town plan that we've read up on in the past. So we're just looking to do whatever's easiest to maintain all of the originality in the house. You know, so we're not looking to have any sort of like real food service or anything like that. No cooking, no open flames.
I assume there would be dedicated resident parking?
Yeah, so.
Because you, there's a discussion about the parking, so just maybe.
Yeah, so the parking lot, we actually measured today and I realized in the letter that I wrote for this meeting that I actually missed one parking spot. So there's already seven parking spaces delineated, one of which has a handicap sign from prior use. Then there's a garage which is residentially zoned. It's past the line of the Village Business District. So that would be specifically for the residential use. But a question that we had about the parking was the lot is 58 feet, 58 and a half feet in one direction and 50 and a half feet in the other direction. And I just didn't know if that would be an option to kind of make a little better use of the space that we already have to include a couple of extra spots there alongside the red barn, like directly up against it. I don't know if you've seen the aerial shot or familiar with the property.
So the parking lot is that dimension?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, not like the whole lot?
No, no, just the parking lot, just the current, existing parking lot.
Yep.
So there's never been any parking like right alongside the red barn, but I, you know, if we needed to meet some additional parking requirements, that was just a discussion that we had today as a possibility. We met with the fire marshal last night who, you know, gave us some guidance about the initial plans that we had that I included in the email for tonight. And basically, he suggested that based on the needs of the stairwells, we wouldn't need to use the front stairwell for the residents at all. I was initially thinking that could be like an emergency exit, but he suggested kind of blocking that section off at the top of the steps to completely separate the residential from the business. And then the door that's on the south side of the house, that would become like the main entrance and exit for that one commercial space. That would be the front three. It's got more of a modern kind of block and door handle from the outside. So.
Interesting, one unit upstairs?
Yes.
Yeah, just by your layout, right?
Yeah, so.
That's all I can do.
Yep, it would just be one residential that would be, the entrance would be towards the back of the property. It would have the kitchen and a little eat-in area downstairs. Upstairs would be the bedrooms, home office, living room.
I just wanted to say like, I think this use, thinking about all the other applications that have come up and any of the issues that people might have had with this, I don't really see any, anything jumping out at this. This wouldn't even be, it would, it would add to the, it's like the same type of use that you're seeing along the roadway. I think it fits within, you know, sort of that little village center. Typically, there's always like a parking conversation. There's always a, people constantly coming in and out and this doesn't seem like that much of an impact compared to what we've had in the past. I feel like this would go through pretty quickly.
Yeah, I mean, and it seems like it would be normal retail hours rather than having to worry about, you know, midnight headlights in the backyard and things like that, other than just yours.
Yeah.
Yeah. One question I had was about the bathroom situation. Do mercantile uses for retail shops require a public bathroom?
It's a state code requirement, I believe so.
Heads on the square footage.
Is that something that we could potentially seek exemption for from the state?
It's not, it's not in our jurisdiction.
Okay.
Yeah, it will be the state building official. Do you have any comments either of you?
I was just saying that if, if it's required, you can ask for a variance from the building inspector.
Okay.
Or the state.
And do we seek those variances prior to the application for planning and zoning change of use or that could be after?
It would be during the building permit process, after planning and zoning approval.
Okay.
Do you know what type of business you want to put in here or is it?
We don't know. We've had a lot of interest already and, you know, we lean towards small retail shops, like small business owners. Kind of feel like there's enough office space right in the area there. We'd like to see some more foot traffic of like people patronizing small businesses down that end of the shop. Next door, you have Neil Walsh, Goldsmith. And, you know, it'd be nice to even bring more traffic down that way a little bit for him. And just kind of add to what's already there, so.
If I just could give you some advice, I think it'd be worth your while to check the ADA requirements in with the building inspector because that can run into some serious money that you may or may not anticipate
Yeah.
before you decide to do anything.
Yeah.
And, and that'll be what really triggers an HDC review. So this would be considered a change of use and it would be a special permit for a mixed-use residential commercial. As part of that process, they are required to come before you for a pre-application review. My question to you would be based on the requirement for additional parking, which I envisioned to be about five additional spaces. They would either need to seek a waiver or and allow as they're indicating in their letter for the parking to be absorbed by public parking, or they would need to have a survey done and show the parking on their property. So that's part of the conversation that I wanted to have this evening.
Yeah, and I guess a concern is whenever, whenever an application comes up, it's what might it be in the future when they're not necessarily owning the building anymore or something in however many years? Somebody could say if this is like a really busy coffee shop and there's a lot of in and out and now we have, like, we approved it for one thing and then that, so, yeah, I guess I can, I can see the, the what-about kind of conversation. Is there, I don't see a way around it though.
Well, I mean, if, if the, if the approval is for, you know, mixed-use with. Well, I mean, if, if the, if the approval is for, you know, mixed-use with, you know, two thousand three hundred and fifteen square feet of retail commercial space as opposed to something else, then at least, you know, we get the opportunity to have, you know, we want to change it to fruit service or, or something else.
Okay.
So five spaces in addition to the seven or eight that they have?
Depending, I mean, I, I haven't actually seen, right, yeah, so.
Depending on how, yeah, yeah.
There's a possibility that there would be a need for additional spaces and I just, you know, want to get a handle of that ahead of time in terms of submission requirements. Are we going to expect an updated survey or, you know?
Well, I guess just to put it in context, what is it now?
What is what now?
The property being used for now?
Fully residential.
Okay.
The red barn is not residential, so it's got a business there and it's got the rest, the, the other building is all residential currently. So there's two separate buildings.
Has that ever been commercial?
Yes. Yeah, so there was.
Sorry, the Enchanted Heart was there from, I think, the sixties to mid-nineties
Yeah.
on that side and then prior to that, I believe Neil Walsh told us the Enchanted Heart was actually inside the house structure itself prior to that, so.
Yeah, it depends on how far back you go, looking at the history.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I was just looking how, whether it predated the current regulations or.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it was last used commercially in maybe like ninety-six or ninety-seven.
Denise, the question is, do we need ex, is there enough room for extra parking? Is that the fifty-two and fifty-eight feet that you mentioned?
Yeah.
So you have, you have extra space that you can build?
We do.
Additional parking?
We have alongside the red barn, that's fifty-eight feet long. The whole lot is fifty and a half feet wide.
The whole parking, parking lot.
The whole parking lot, sorry. And only one side of the parking lot is used for parking currently. So there's a whole other side of the lot that has no, you know, spaces delineated, nothing painted, where I feel like, you know, I'm not an expert at outlining a parking lot, but there's at least room for a couple more spaces there potentially if needed. But I think, you know, for the ease of people pulling in and then backing out to come out of the, the lot, if we could meet the requirement by relying on the public parking to absorb those five extra spaces that the square footage would require based on, you know, the current code, that would be my preference.
Yeah, I mean, and then you start getting into, you know, is the parking lot in the VB zone or is it in the part of the lot that's residential and, you know, do you have buffers because there's a buffer requirement?
Okay, yeah, it is all, the whole parking lot is in the Village Business Zone. As far as I can tell, the, the residential section starts at the garage that's in the back.
Okay.
And goes beyond that. I know there's, you know, been parking studies lately and plans for enlarging the parking and everything, so hopefully that would, you know, work in our favor. The other thing that we were discussing is the, the demand on the parking in that particular area due to the, the restaurant there seems to be greater in the evening and we're looking at, you know, more daytime kind of businesses, so I don't know if that could also be a kind of consideration when we're looking at asking that the public parking be able to absorb those five spots.
There are a number of bedrooms, the plot plan you gave us or the floor plan has a study on your room, primary bedroom, another bedroom and an office. Would that be dedicated maybe as a two-bedroom versus a three, which would eliminate the potential of two or three parking places being used by future people on that separate floor?
Yeah, we're looking at a two-bedroom.
Two-bedroom, and so that might be part of your submission to us?
Yeah. Yeah, what the previous owner used as a bedroom, we'd be looking at using as a living space. Because we'd be removing the living space from downstairs, so it would move upstairs.
So Denise, you're asking us about parking then. You'd like to hear from us about should we require five extra parking or not? Is that what you're asking?
No, I'm asking if I should require as part of their submission for the special permit application, a survey showing the five spaces on their property or if, as they are indicating in the letter, if they could use the public parking that exists to absorb the potential five additional spaces that they may need.
Yeah, I think that, the, that is probab, the latter is probably fine, but I think it would be helpful to have like a plot plan showing where the existing parking is so that we can kind of intelligently say, no, there's no point in paving the entire backyard for hypothetical spaces.
Yeah.
Just so that, you know, it's an informed decision on our part.
Definitely.
Make sure it's the scale, okay?
Yeah.
Has there been any survey work done, as far as you know?
No, not under our ownership and we didn't receive any prior surveys. But I can certainly, you know, draw something that is easily seen. Denise showed me an aerial picture of the property recently, so that would be helpful that I could just kind of.
You probably also have a plot plan in town that you can get some dimensions off of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of people do that. They have the nineteen fifty-eight map that they just draw on.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can grab like survey quality aerials online. There's like a Yukon site for that.
Okay.
So, I mean, there's, there's ways that you'll be able to get something in that's to scale.
Okay, great. Yeah, I saw that the requirements for width are about seven and a half to nine feet, I think, so there's definitely seven spots along one side, the south side of the parking lot currently.
Yeah, I mean, and then you do the math, you know, it's like nine by eighteen, but you have to have the turning and the.
Right, and that could be why the other side hasn't had any parking alongside the barn, I don't know.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody else? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, next minutes of December second.
George isn't here. Nobody makes any comments when George isn't here.
It must be perfect.
There are only three of us who are here.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's pass on it then, I guess.
Was that a Wednesday?
No. All right, staff reports, anything?
As a follow-up to the conversation we had at the last meeting, there is an application that will be coming in for six sixty-two Silastine Highway for the U-Hauls as an accessory use. I have a meeting tomorrow with the applicants for seven oh eight Silastine for the expansion of the convenience store to discuss the parking requirements. We did get a building permit submission for the new Starbucks at eighteen sixty-two Berlin Turnpike. The Mylars have been signed, not filed, so I anticipate that to happen probably early next week. The Mylars were filed for one sixty-four, one sixty-six Main, that's for the Linoches. They're working through some issues with the building department and hopes to get the foundation permit approved. I do anticipate issuing the RFP for the planned development in the next few weeks. So I did think we should maybe have a conversation about having a subcommittee. I don't know if any of you guys are interested, but you can let me know.
I'm down.
There was also a building permit filed a few days ago for Dorro Market to do minimal work in the thirteen oh one Silastine Highway, the former Chips. And that's really all I have to report unless you guys have any questions about anything specific.
Denise, I'd like to mention the one item I sent you an email on.
Luna.
Just, just so everybody's aware of it. At the last EDIC meeting, it was brought to my attention that, at least it was thought by, by one of the members, that Luna Pizza had agreed to not use Uber and DoorDash and that they would strictly use their own drivers because of the concern we had with parking and people not knowing, remember to have a discussion. But if you go to their website, apparently I didn't go, but all this individual said, if you go to their website, you can see that they're actually advertising the use of DoorDash and other delivery services, which they thought would be in violation of what we approved. So I asked Denise to check and see if that was part of the approval or not, and I don't think it was, right?
It was not a condition of approval. It was definitely part of the conversation, so I would have to go back to the YouTube and, I mean, I think that they indicated the use of those services would be minimal, but I don't, I don't know that they said it would be nonexistent.
No, my, my vague recollection is that they said that they were going to rely on their own people or something like that, but.
If I want Luna Pizza right now, it's Glass and Berry from DoorDash. I don't have a Weathersfield option, so.
Okay, so maybe they were wrong.
You can order on, you can order on.
Does anybody want a pizza?
You can order online for Weathersfield, but you, I went and picked it up anyway.
We'll look into that a little bit more, but yeah.
Website and brought it up as an issue and it wasn't an issue.
I'll get back to it.
Well, now Luna is multiple locations, so.
All right, anybody else? Public comment?
Ribbon cutting at Luna. Friday at five.
By DoorDash?
By, yeah, sponsored by.
Friday at five?
We're all going to park at those two spots.
Friday at five, I love it.
Is it free pizza?
I was hoping for a pizza and a beer, but I don't know.
Motion to adjourn?
I'm, I'm all ears.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor, say aye. Thanks.
Well, there's always something else and I'm always like, every time I'll say like, motion to adjourn, you'll just be like, well, we have like three more applications. I'm like, damn it.
Rich to say he's all ears.
Oh darn, I was meant to ask about something.
Yeah, that's right. That's.
I'm trying to think when it was. It was probably the second Friday in December. I ordered takeout from there. Five fifteen. Three empty spaces right in front of the.
Thank you, good to see you.
All right. We gentlemen next time.
Yeah, wow. Yeah. We're just gonna have to.